This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees is being held Tuesday, January the 18th, 2022. The meeting is being called to order and the time is 6 o'clock. Do that before, I'm sorry. Can you all join us? We have a special guest here that's gonna help lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Her name is Elise Arredondo, 8th grader from Enzer Middle School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag under the United States of America. One true republic, where truth stand, one nation, under God, one indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Thank you, Elise. Let's proceed to the next item. Miss, our interim superintendent's comments. Go ahead, Ms. Carmona.
Good evening, everyone, President Morales and members of the board. I would like to share with you, and our SISD community, how proud I feel to be part of this great district compiled of such hardworking students and teachers. One of the most inspiring things that I witness in Team SISD on a consistent basis is the willingness of students and teachers to go above and beyond for our community. This evening, I'd like to give you a great example of that readiness and enthusiasm as demonstrated by the El Dorado High School Band. When I got a call from one of the Sun Bowl Association members asking if we could have one of our bands fill in for the Washington State University Band at the game, I thought at this point, maybe, we could try. I have to be honest, and I hesitated because I knew our hardworking students and staff were enjoying their well-deserved winter break. But when I called Mrs. Estrada Batson and Mr. Martinez, they jumped into action and made it happen. I want to give a tremendous recognition and a giant thank you to band director Mr. Carl Ortega and the El Dorado High School Marching Band for coming together and getting it done. Not only did they do it, they learned the school's fight song in about 24 hours. They certainly shined on that gray rainy Sun Bowl day. Their level of talent, level of commitment, level of devotion to our school and district is incredible. The students and their band directors received so many compliments and so many accolades from people from all over the country. I believe they even received monetary donations for their wonderful actions. The El Dorado Band students are our why. They are why we work hard to provide endless and unforgettable opportunities for them to gain experience, skills, and knowledge for a lucrative future. They are why we lead with our hearts at all times. Congratulations and thank you to the El Dorado Band and their directors. I also have a couple of events to share with everyone. We're going to be celebrating our Options High School graduation on January 24th at 10:00 a.m. We will also be having a virtual teacher job fair on January 27th, and it will be from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. You can also find additional information on our website about the job fair. Thank you, this concludes my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Carmona. I'm gonna move to item four, a special presentation. Our presenter is Mr. Daniel Escobar.
Good evening, President Morales, members of the board, and interim superintendent, Dr. Carmona. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's special presentation. And for this presentation, you may remain seated. This evening, we pay tribute to Socorro ISD's Board of Trustees in honor of School Board Recognition Month. Our Board Trustees are remarkable citizens who dedicate their time and service to serve as a link between the community and our schools. The Board Trustees volunteer their time to govern with transparency, responsibility, and accountability, and to ensure the needs of both students and employees are being met as the district as a whole works toward academic excellence and overall success for all. The last couple of years have been challenging as Team SISD and the rest of the world has been operating with the daily challenges brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic. However, our SISD Board of Trustees have been supportive to help SISD deliver a safe and healthy learning environment for both students and employees. The best resources and tools for students to learn, compensation for employees and families to endure the hardships of the pandemic, and support to ensure funds and resources are available to fill gaps and needs for academics and social and emotional assistance. We salute our SISD Board Trustees for taking on the challenges to understand our community's needs and make decisions with the best interests of students, employees, and families in mind. They work with district administration, community leaders, constituents, and educators to develop educational and operational policies that support student achievement, employee professional growth, and ensure the solvency of the district. Our Board Trustees have lived up to the theme of this year's School Board Recognition Month, which is "Rising Above," and we thank them for giving selflessly and ensuring we can overcome any difficulty to succeed for our students and schools. As our Board Trustees have been rising above during these trying times, they have inspired the more than 47,000 students that we serve daily and the 7,000 employees in the district to continue with our longstanding tradition of excellence. As we celebrate 60 years in Team SISD, we are grateful for our Board Trustees' support, which has allowed for endless opportunities for our students to excel now and in the future. And to show the impact our school board members have in our community, we'd like to share this video in recognition of your service to our community. Let's take a look.
Over the last 60 years, the Socorro Independent School District has celebrated countless students and employees who have triumphed to rise to the occasion. Through it all, we have been supported by an incredible team of community members who give selflessly to ensure we can rise above and succeed. To this day, that legacy continues with our devoted SISD Board of Trustees, who has empowered the Socorro ISD family to rise above our recent unprecedented challenges. To these selfless citizens who strive for greatness for our Socorro ISD family, we say thank you for leading with your hearts.
Thank you for everything you have done to keep us safe.
Thank you for providing the best resources and ensuring that we have what we need to learn.
Thank you for giving us athletic opportunities to stay physically fit and strong.
Thank you for giving us endless opportunities in science, technology, engineering, and math.
Thank you for providing us with fine arts experiences to boost our creativity and talent.
Thank you for ensuring we have new and improved schools and facilities to have state-of-the-art learning environments.
Thank you for giving us special programs to get a head start in careers, college, and life.
Thank you for taking care of us, giving us security and peace of mind to take care of our families at home.
Thank you again, SISD Board of Trustees, for your leadership. Together, we will rise above and beyond.
Again, thank you to the SISD Board of Trustees for your commitment to us all. Across Team SISD, principals, students, employees, and community members have shown their support and appreciation for our board. We have seen numerous social media posts, and we have collected student artwork and letters of thanks in honor of the SISD Board Trustees. In addition, we have several tokens of appreciation for each of you. The campuses have sent gifts adorned with their mascots and logos and baskets filled with school spirit objects and treats for you to enjoy. Those items are to your left and to the audience's right, and there's so much overflow, there's boxes underneath that we'll help you take to your cars later this evening. Today, we also have a unique handmade piece of artwork created especially for each of you. Our trustees have been rising above to keep the district's schools, students, and staff safe and successful, and we appreciate your steadfast service to handle this complex job. The handcrafted and imaginative hot air balloons, which were designed by students from various SISD schools, symbolizes the tenacity and determination of our board to rise above the challenges for the good of our district. We hope that you enjoy this gift, and it brings you inspiration as you continue your service and work to help students and staff seize their opportunities in Team SISD. Today, we have a group of students who are here to present you with the incredible masterpiece that they helped create. Board Trustees, as I call your name, if you'll please step down to receive this unique, one-of-a-kind gift that was created just for you. Presenting to Board President David Morales, from Enzer Middle School, 8th grader Elise Arredondo. And if we'll have the two of you step to the front over here, so Mr. Largo can take a few photos. Yes, thank you. And if you wouldn't mind, if you'll stand over here to the side, and we'll have a group photo at the end. And presenting to Board Vice President Ricardo Castellano, from Motwood Middle School, 8th grader Haley Galloso. Wonderful. Presenting to Board Secretary Eduardo Mena, from Sun Ridge Middle School, 7th grader Diane Natalia Mayorga. Presenting to Board Trustee, Mr. Paul Guerra, from John Druigan School, 7th grader Angelina Gonzalez. Beautiful. Presenting to Board Trustee Cynthia A. Nakara, from Jane A. Hamburg School, 8th grader Victoria Rios. Presenting to Board Trustee Michael A. Nakara, from Enzer Middle School, 8th grader Elise Arredondo. Rounding out, our team of eight, presenting to interim superintendent, Dr. Martha C. Carmona, from Socorro Middle School, 8th grader Jimena Nevaris. And a quick note, Jimena, and the students from Socorro Middle School also have a gift that will be presented to Mr. Guerra at a later time. At this time, if I can please have the trustees join Dr. Carmona for a quick photo, and right after that, we'll have the students join as well. Let's take one with the trustees and Dr. Carmona, and then we'll put the students in there as well. Awesome. Students, if you'll please join Dr. Carmona and our trustees. All right, if everybody will smile, look forward right at Mr. Largo here. Keep smiling. Thank you again to our amazing student artists or teachers or colleagues who helped with these, and again to our trustees for all that you do for all of us in Team SISD. That concludes our presentation.
I'm gonna move to item five, Board of Trustees Business. A, Consider Approval of the National School Counselors Week Proclamation. Our presenter is Ms. Tammy McCabon.
Good evening, President Morales, interim superintendent, Dr. Carmona, and members of the board. My name is Tammy McCabon, I'm the Director of School Counseling. Each year, the American School Counselor Association recognizes school counselors from across the country during National School Counselor Week. This year, National School Counselor Week is February 7th through 11th, 2022. This evening, we have a student from Enzer Middle School, 8th grader Adria Dominguez, who is going to read the proclamation for us.
Proclamation. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim February 7th through the 11th, 2022, a National School Counseling Week.
We had a motion by Mr. Eddie Mena, and a second by Ms. Cynthia Nakara, to approve this item as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is the open forum. I'm gonna go ahead and read this, please bear with me, it's kinda long, a little lengthy. "The district is a local government body charged with the serving, the educational needs of the school, of all schoolchildren, and our district, and board meetings must be focused on the meeting, uh, meeting this, this charge. The district board meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act to conduct the business of the district. There are not, however, meetings of the public. Therefore, all persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum. Individuals that shall refrain from using harmful and offensive content, um, obscenity, fighting words are examples, for respect of the rights and reputation of others. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the body during open forum or in regards to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda, and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in all your presentation." By law, the board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations our serious consideration. Thank you. Let's proceed to open forum. Our first speaker? Our first speaker is Ms. Angie Soto.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Morales, School Board Trustees, and Dr. Carmona. I am the President for Socorro Education Association, my name is Angelica Soto. I am addressing you this evening to laud you for your excellent service to the Socorro ISD students and employees. In my long history with the district, this district has stood head and shoulders above any other district in their concern for the welfare and well-being of both students and employees. With very few exceptions throughout the decades, our school trustees have not had their own agenda, but have acted and made decisions in the best interest of all the district's stakeholders. Your service is greatly appreciated and noted. Thank you for your leadership, your volunteer service, and your efforts and time into making Socorro an A-plus district. I should stand up here every single month and thank you for the decisions that you make, which impact and for the benefit of our students and our employees, but since today is the month that we're recognizing you, I chose this time. Thank you so much."
Our next speaker is Ms. Darlene Sanchez-Renteria.
Good evening, President Morales, Dr. Carmona, and members of the board. My name is Darlene Sanchez-Renteria. I am a bilingual pre-K teacher at Waco Elementary and a proud vice president of West Texas Alliance. We would like to take this time not only to thank you for your selfless efforts and diligent work for the students and staff of our district, but to also to convey our thoughts on the crucial task that lies ahead. Our district, like many others in our region and across the country, is experiencing student fatigue, employee burnout and shortages, low morale, and numerous other personal losses. Despite this, our district continues to move forward because of the great foundation that it has established. Now your task is to carefully select a leader that will not only continue to build on the foundation, but who is willing to roll up their sleeves, jump into the trenches, and do the work of rebuilding, rebuilding morale, rebuilding trust, restoring respect to the education profession, and restoring the district to, I'm sorry, and restoring the district, the district that families choose to be a part of. The members of West Texas Alliance came together to provide input of what we would like in our next district leader, and what we feel is going to take to move us forward despite the challenges we face. The top characteristics that were identified are, one, to have a servant's heart with deep and sustained commitment to prioritizing students' learning and rebuilding students' and teachers' mental health above all else, above branding and accolades. Two, to have the roots to our city, embrace and acknowledge the unique challenges and demographics of our community, and realize that our mentality must no longer be of a small district, practices, and procedures. Three, to be present and involved by visiting our classrooms, going outside for recess, sitting in our campus's PLCs, connecting to students, connecting to staff, and sharing a snack, a merienda, with parents. To unite our employees, our communities, and our school board with purpose, integrity, I mean ingenuity, and dedication to students' access and success, hard work, and enhance opportunities for diverse students and employees populations. Number five, to be humble, audacious, strong, passionate, courageous. Audacious, passionate, strong, and courageous. In the pursuit of equity across our district with strategic streamlined procedures, programs, positions, and ideas, we do not envy your position with this task, but our faith and our trust is with you to continue to do the right thing for our students and our staff. The selection you will make will have a profound impact on our district for many years to come, and we entrust that you will make the right choice for Socorro ISD. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, President Morales, Dr. Carmona, and members of the board. I'm Tom Hill, proud bus driver for Squirrel Transportation and vice president of West Texas Alliance. We would like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for your service, commitment, and support of the 117 West Texas Alliance members in transportation and the over 300 members district-wide. We know the selfless, tireless work you do may often go unnoticed, but we see your efforts, and we truly value and appreciate your passion and service to our students, staff, and community. This past year, with your support and direction, our district has made it through this pandemic, has kept our students receiving, uh, direction, uh, education and much-needed services, has kept it, okay. Cost of health benefits low, and even provided retention bonuses to employees. We want to thank you for the $1,000 bonus in April, $1,000 bonus in August, $2,000 bonus in November. Thank you very much for that. Thank you very much for that. Your hard work has been remarkable, and we look forward to continuing to work with you for the betterment and success of our district. Happy School Board Recognition Month, President Morales, Vice President Richard Castiano, Secretary Eddie Mena, Trustee Paul Geda, Cynthia Nahara, Pablo Barra, and Michael Nahara. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hill, I also have you on here. Is that going to be separate?
Yeah.
That was it? Thank you, sir. That concludes our open forum for this evening. We're going to move over to, uh, Item Eight, District Reports. Oh, before we do that, we got a public hearing. Item Seven, we've got, uh, our, uh, Seven A, 2020, 2021 Annual Report. In this report, our presenter is going to be Callie McBean.
Good evening, Board President Morales, Dr. Carmona, members of the board. My name is Callie McBean. I'm the Director for Research and Evaluation, and this presentation is a public hearing of the 2020-2021 Annual Report as required by Chapter Thirty-nine of the Texas Education Code. The full report is located under a separate cover, and it will also be posted to our website. The annual performance report, it includes several sections with the Texas Academic Performance Report being the main section. It also includes actual financial data, campus performance objectives, student performance in post-secondary institutions, the report on violent or criminal incidences, and information regarding school violence prevention and intervention. This presentation today will focus on the Texas Academic Performance Report. The taper includes information on state, regional, and district data to include the disaggregation of student populations, on STAR assessment results, attendance, graduation, and dropout data, college and career-ready graduates, a teacher profile, and student profiles. I'll highlight data from each of these sections, and I'll begin with our district accountability rating. Socorro ISD was rated not rated. That's an actual rating, not rated. Declared state of disaster for the second year in a row, as were all districts in the state of Texas. The last year in which an official rating was assigned was in 2019, when Socorro ISD was an A-rated district and received the post-secondary distinction designation. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the effect of the pandemic in regards to STAR assessment data, and I'll start with participation rates. Firstly, if a student was administered the STAR assessment, it was required by TEA that they come in person to test. The TEA extended the decision to parents based on their comfort level to either bring their child in for testing or to continue with remote instruction at home on testing days and not test the STAR assessment. So normally, we have 100% participation rate, which you can see on the gold bar there for 2019. That'd be a normal school year, but in 2021, we had a 54% participation rate. With the concentration of students that did come in to test, were mostly high school students as they require the end-of-course assessments for graduation. Grades three through eight participation rates were about 35% of that 54, and mostly high school participation was about 85%. So this makes it difficult to make comparisons to either the state or other districts because the pandemic affected geographical areas differently. Some schools in Texas never actually went to remote instruction, while others were ground zero for infection rates like El Paso. Since Socorro ISD experienced a similar response to the pandemic as surrounding districts due to local health mandates, went ahead and made a regional comparison, which made the, made the most sense. So on this slide, it's a two-year comparison. You can see Socorro ISD data on the left and Region 19 data on the right. In Socorro ISD, we experienced a drop in the passing rate on the STAR test of 19 percentage points. Socorro ISD was at 84% of students testing, uh, passing the STAR assessments back in 2019 versus 65% passing in 2021. On the right is Region 19 data, and you'll see that the, um, the drop in passing percentage rates is exactly the same. It's a 19% point drop. So the area districts as a whole experienced the pandemic effects, responses in a similar way, so it's no surprise the, the region experienced a, a similar drop. So they went from 80% in 2019 to 61% in 2021. The next slide shows 2021 data compared to Region 19 data by subject. So Socorro, you can see in blue, and Region 19 in gold. Um, Socorro ISD remains ahead of the regional average in all subject areas. Um, so we, we did lose ground, but we're not behind. Attendance, graduation, and dropout rates are reported always a year behind, so this data is actually from the 2019-2020 school year, when the pandemic actually started that March. So our attendance rate, um, was 98.6, um, basically unaffected by, by the pandemic. Graduation rate, similar story, 91.8%, and our dropout rate remained low at 1% compared to 1.7 regional, regionally wide. College and career-ready graduates, um, this, this data is also reported a year behind. Um, it used to be called CCMR, College Career and Military Readiness. TEA stopped reporting the military readiness portion of it, um, for this, this year because they were having difficulty collecting that information, um, from all the districts, so they want to get that information from the armed forces. Um, so they'll resume it when they're able to do so. So our college career-ready graduates percentage was 60.4%, so that's the, the percent of students that are graduating our high schools with either college credit or some form of college readiness towards college, um, or they've received an industry-based certification. So some of those key indicators for college and career readiness are listed here. Students receiving at least nine hours of dual-credit course, um, coursework in any subject, or three hours in math or reading. That increased 6.1% to 33.4% of our graduates. That's a third of our graduates receiving dual-credit, um, which is high school and college-level courses. An associate's degree is also a component of the CCR. Uh, we increased that by 1.5 percentage points to a total of 5.7% of our students that year receiving an associate's degree in addition to their high school diploma. And then our industry-based certifications went up 6.8 percentage points to 16.3, so students graduating career-ready. The next section of the taper report is the student profile, um, our total district count, official count. It's taken on the last Friday of the, um, October. It's 46,932 students. And then you have the, um, you have the makeup of our district, which is largely Hispanic at 92.2%, followed by white at 3.7, and then African-American at 2.2%. Our economically disadvantaged percentage is 69.7. Military connected is 11.4. Emergent bilingual, quarter of our population, 25.6, and our special education population is at 11.5%. Lastly, is the teacher profile, where you can see almost a third of our teachers hold a master's or higher degree, which is significantly higher than the state average at 25.7%. Teachers by years of experience is listed next. We have 7.8% of our teachers are beginning teachers in the district compared to, um, the state at 6.7%. And then what you'll notice highlighted on this page is, um, our teachers by years of experience at 11-plus years. That's over 50% of our teachers have at least 11 years of experience. And then lastly, our turn, our teacher turnover rate is at 8.8%, which is significantly lower than the state average of 14.3%. So the full report will be posted on the district website, and copies will be made available, um, at the district office for the public. Since this is a public hearing, we would like to solicit public input. Mr. Morales.
This is a public hearing of the 2020-2021 Annual Performance Report. We would like to solicit public input at this time. Anybody would like to make any comment, or anybody want to share?
You probably need to move so you don't get run over.
I think our public is satisfied with your performance report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
We're going to move to Item Eight, District Reports, Facility Report. Our presenter is Mr. Tom Iinton.
Good evening, President Morales, Dr. Carmona, interim superintendent, members of the board. My report begins on 131, I believe. And I have the fact sheets on. The very first project is Socorro High School. Uh, Socorro High School has come along real well. And by the way, Happy New Year's. I think this is our first meeting of the new year. If I hadn't seen you, Happy New Year. Unfortunately, right around the time of the new year, we had some rain, and it had, it had affected some of our projects. So just today, at two of our projects, we had, uh, an infrared camera out at both Socorro High School and El Dorado High School, uh, looking at the, the roof situation and also the flooring situation at the gymnasium. I do not have that report yet, but that will be forthcoming. But I just want to let you know that under the contractors CM@Risk Builders Risk Insurance, all of this is going to be covered if there is substantial damage to both of these projects. Continuing with Socorro High School, we are working on punch list and, uh, doing a lot of work on the Phase One, closing it out, and looking into Phase Two, uh, which is the additional, uh, building. This, you can see that we've got the, uh, view of the fine arts area, looking back towards, uh, the new construction. And the fine arts area is the area that's basically in the gray area. And you can see the, uh, rectangular shape in the middle. That's our new fly loft over our stage area, uh, that, well, you'll see some interior pictures here, here in a minute. This is the, uh, construction going on, on the early college area, uh, on the, on the left-hand side of, and the, uh, area that will be, uh, where, will be added to the fine arts area, uh, on the right-hand side. Uh, and some interior, uh, of the fine arts, uh, the remodeled class, uh, hallways. You can see that we've got a lot of ceramic tile going up on the walls, in the corridors, and on the, both the first and second floor. Uh, this is the view of the orchestra room and the, uh, view of the hallway between the jazz and the band room. This, uh, on the left, you can see that the volume of the space above the stage, the fly loft, and the stage is being constructed and built in the view of the bio medicine lab area on the right-hand side. Some additional, uh, work that's being done. We've got a lot of stud work, uh, framing, a lot of HVAC in all of the, uh, restrooms, offices, and the patient care lab areas. The next project is Montwood High School. We are, um, finalizing that project, um, met with the CM@Risk this morning on both Socorro High School and Montwood, and we are working on punch list, and hopefully, uh, we will be, uh, starting some parking lot improvements over at Montwood, and then we'll continue to finalize that project and, uh, in the next couple of months, hopefully bring a deductive change order, uh, to the board for y'all's approval on Montwood High School. The next project is Americas High School. Americas High School is moving. It is expected to be completed in May of '22, but we are actually ahead of schedule on that, and we think that we'll be able to bring, uh, that project to completion. Uh, we're doing a lot of interior work. We have turned over a lot of that project, as y'all are, are aware of, but, uh, this shows the, uh, addition facing Pelacano and the fine art addition, uh, facing, uh, the opposite street. And then we have completed over the holidays, the graphic and the interior work on the cafeteria with the new graphic and signage and furniture in there, and these are some pictures of the dining room in the, in the cafeteria area at Americas High School. We continue to work on, uh, the area that has to do with some prop shots, shops, and, and additional, uh, fine arts area. The culinary arts area, you can see that we, we're beginning some finish work, and we're installing some, uh, culinary kitchen equipment in that area. The mobile, uh, bookroom, uh, you've seen pictures of it as just an open room. Now you see that on the left-hand side, you see those shelving units that move back and forth that will hold all of the textbooks. And then the drama room, uh, dressing area, uh, we preparing to put the, uh, the millwork in there for the dressing area and the drama room. And the new dressing area continues, and the, uh, we are starting to work on the, uh, repainting of the band practice field in between the buildings. The next project is El Dorado High School. Uh, as I stated earlier, we did, uh, have the infrared camera over there, and I am waiting for that report on the, uh, the, the roof on that and, and the report on the flooring in the, uh, in the gymnasium. But we are continuing to work with, uh, all, all the various areas at El Dorado and are in final stages on some of the, you can see then the bio, biomedical classroom, we've installed the millwork, getting ready to put the tops in. Uh, we're working on the, uh, dance room and the new gallery wing in the architectural, uh, end of the building. And then, of course, we're working on the cafeteria area, and we're also looking at that, that graphic layout and furniture layout for, uh, El Dorado. And then, of course, uh, on the right is the new architectural room. The new student activity complex, uh, we are starting, uh, mobilization on that, uh, and hopefully we'll start some dirt work and some grading, uh, and, uh, we'll get that project going. Contractor is mobil, mobilizing, and, uh, we are working with the city to get permitted and complete, and, and this is in connect, connection with the annexation, uh, of that into the city of El Paso. And of course, this is ultimately what it's going to look like when the project is finished. The next projects are the auxiliary gyms. Uh, we have completed, um, Bid Package One. We have completed bid package one, bid package two, and big bid package three was the remaining package. And we took possession of all of those schools in January, in the early part of January. So all of the five campuses in the valley are now using all of their auxiliary gyms. And we're in the process of closing out those projects. Bid package two, I will be bringing next month a deductive change order to close that project out and the final payment on bid package two. We are working to that same goal on bid package three. Don't know if it will be next month, but it might be the following month. And then you can see on the bid package three, the auxiliary gyms completed at the five campuses. The next project is the Support Service Technology Project. We are complete with that project. We're working on the closeout documents. And hopefully in the next month or so, I will bring you another deductive change order on that project to close that project out. Pebble Hills High School Sports Leiden and Field Modification. I have a deductive change order on that. Did not make the meeting this month, and I'll bring that along with the other one next month, a deductive change order closing out Pebble Hills High School Sports Leiden and Field Modification. East Lake is complete. We will be working to do the same thing on East Lake, bringing a deductive change order to close that project out. The next project, I got cut off, I believe, yeah. It's the Ben Arbuthitt Elementary School and East Lake Middle School. This is an aerial that basically shows you the overall site. We are approaching 70% completion on the entire project. We'd only have to have the, looking at the aerial, the portion on the my right-hand side completed, which is the elementary school. The middle school will be completed in December, but will not open until the following year. And you can see that we've got a lot of interior finishes going on in both the, this is the elementary portion of the building. And then you can see the middle school's not too far behind that. And of course, the kitchen area will be open to service the new elementary school when it's open. You can see classroom corridors on the first and second floor, and then the middle school, and then the computer labs in the middle school. The locker rooms. And then, of course, here is an aerial of the middle school looking back towards, no, excuse me, that's the elementary side of the building. The final two projects are the bus canopy. That project is started. We have got some things selected and submitted, and we are waiting for structural steel to come in, and we'll start the canopy structure. We hadn't had a pay application on that, so couldn't, I can't tell you that it's X amount percent complete, but we are working on that project. Along with the last project is the SISD maintenance facility, which is in design. And we are looking at finishing the design and proceeding into construction documents and then hopefully start construction on that project towards the end of the spring, early part of summer. At that, at this time, that completes my report. There's any questions?
Any questions for the board at this time? No, thank you, Mr. Iinton.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled at this time from this, from our consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second. With that said, we have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Eddie Mena. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Next is our new business. We have to start off with, we have to consider approval of 2022, 2023, and 2324 district calendars. Our presenter is Ms. Lucia Forego.
Good evening, President Morales, interim superintendent Martha Carmona, and board members. It's great to be up here today. And can you believe we're already doing another two years of the student calendar? So I'm excited. I presented it at CNI and several places throughout this last month. And so pretty much, we're on a year-round calendar, so there's no surprises because there's not a lot of wiggle room when we develop the student calendar. It's pretty much what we've seen. I've been in the district for 22 years, and it's pretty much doesn't change for 22 years other than what throws us for a loop, and this is not one of the two years, is when we have a leap year. And then that causes us a little bit of problems when we have that, or when 4th of July lands on like a Saturday or Sunday. But that didn't happen this time either. So I want to share a little bit of history about the calendar. A couple of years ago, we used to do a year-to-year calendar many years ago. And then, as we listened to our families, our community, our teachers, we went to a two-year calendar. I think this is the third time now that we're doing a two-year calendar. And the reason we did that was mainly for our military families, and we have a huge military population. So our military families, especially when they're deployed, really need a two-year student calendar so that they know when their kids, when they're going to be, or their spouses many times, are going to be out, when they're going to have their breaks, so that they could plan their deployment. And the military apparently doesn't want to give, doesn't give a one-month notice. You've got to give them lots of notice. So that's one of the reasons that we went to the two-year calendar. And also, it was helping our employees. It was allowing many of our families also to plan and also instructionally, because this is the student calendar. And so the student calendar is for us to plan around academics as well. So it allows us to plan and be able to have a solid systematic structure in place for two years as we do our planning and are responsible with putting all of that together. So as we go through this, a couple of things that I want to share with you. This is, this year, we have really, we've gone out and we've really shared this calendar with so many of the moving parts of our school district. It was very important for us to be able to share this and allow input, not just from our community members, but our students, our parents, our teachers, our central office personnel. I want to say a great big thank you to all of the academics department. We're such a united department. And so everybody had a lot of input. Dr. Starkey was the mastermind in making sure that every single minute was accounted for, and you'll understand why that's important in just a little bit. But just so that you know, the first vetting of these calendars, even though we, what we do is we go back and we look at the previous calendars and we kind of lay it out like that. And then the work goes into it, the holidays, the minutes, et cetera. So that started in academic services. And then after that, we took it to cabinet several times, back and forth. And then when we felt it was ready, and like I said, there's not a lot of wiggle room, so it's like one little thing or another. We then took it to the superintendent's parent advisory committee. And all of the parents, there's a representative from each school at the superintendent's parent advisory. We shared it with them. And we got a big applause on something new that we implemented this year, and I'll tell you about it in just a little bit as well. And then, and then after that, we took it to the superintendent's student advisory. And we made sure that the kids were able to give input and the students were able to talk to us about it. And then, and then we took it to EPAC, of course. And then they took it back, oh, we also shared it with the principals as well during EPAC. And then they took it back to their six committees, all at every single campus. And we allowed for input there. And then, of course, now we're here with you to adopt the calendar for the next two years. So several years ago, just so you know a little bit of history, several years ago, the Texas Legislature passed a law that eliminated the requirement for a specific number of instructional days and replaced it with a required minimum amount of 75,600 instructional minutes per year. So that's where Dr. Starkey came in and did all his mathematical wizardness and made sure that we were, and you always want to pad it a little bit. We want to go ahead of the 75,000, right? Because in case of a snow day, I know that doesn't happen that often in El Paso, but it has happened, right? So the state law, so the law requires 75,600 instructional minutes per year. And the state law also requires that classroom teachers work a contract that's 187 days. So adopting these calendars today is very important because what this does is it sets the, it's like a domino effect. After us, then it'll go to the employees and so on and so forth. So, and then HR will develop the employee calendar and we go from there, right? So with that, if you look at the next, oh, I haven't moved the slides over here because I'm busy looking at my slides. Is that why everybody's looking at me? Just tell me. I'm getting eyes up there like, just follow along, guys. You guys are the ones, no, I'm kidding. Sorry, everybody. Anyway, so as it's widely known, the state of Texas requires schools to administer the Texas State Assessment Program. The assessment date calendars are provided by the Texas Education Agency, and we ensure that All-Star and End of Course and Telpass dates and windows are incorporated into our district calendar. This is a very important disclaimer. A disclaimer is always on our calendar that assessment dates are subject to change by TEA. So TEA is still kind of old school, and they think everybody starts in September, school in September, so they don't put out their testing dates till way later. But Kelly, who you heard from, Kelly McBane, who you heard from earlier, she does a pretty good job at guessing when the testing windows are. And if we have to come back to you all because the testing window does change, we'll bring back that calendar to you. And that's normally where the change might come. Right, I'm going to, I'm going to the next slide, everybody. Here we go. Okay, both the 2223 and 2324 calendars have comprised 175 student instructional days, of which two are early release days. The 175 instructional days are divided into four nine-week periods. In both calendars, a total number of instructional minutes that students will receive for the year is 80,130, which exceeds the minimum requirement of 75,600. And that's okay in case we have a snow day or nowadays, a pandemic day or something like that where we might need some minutes. And if not, our kids get more instruction, right? So that's always a good thing. The, one of the things that we do in Socorro ISD, which I think is really great, is we allow teachers the opportunity to have days to learn, to grow, and to also work in their classrooms. So we provide nine staff development days and three teacher workdays. And if I'm not mistaken, as, because we've already seen the calendars in the other school districts, they're short too. Well, I say short, but you know, everybody develops their calendar. I will also share with you that, and this is very important as a board, as a school district, that we are getting emails and calls from TEA from different regions, because these regions will reach out to TEA and say, hey, we want to visit Socorro, we want to see their year-round calendar. So more and more school districts are wanting to go to year-round, especially because of what's happening with the pandemic and being able to close those gaps, because you go nine weeks and then you have remediation, nine weeks, et cetera. So both calendars are designated fall and spring open house nights. Oh, so that's what I wanted to tell you that I'm super excited about. So the assistant superintendents had a great idea, and we had been listening to teachers and parents frustration because the schools or the feeder patterns would designate their parent nights, their report card nights, right? And many times, parents were stuck because there was a lot of, right, a lot of days where they had to go to the same school and they couldn't see their kids. So now what we've done, and this is where the parents applauded us, they were so happy. We have a designated day on the calendar for elementary open house, middle school open house, and high school open house. So parents were very excited about that, so they'll be able to go to all of their kids' open houses. Both calendars are designated for the same holidays, Labor Day, Veterans Day, and it lands on a Friday. Oh, change the, shoot. Where am I? Somebody needs to help me drive here. Am I right here? Is this the right one? Oh, yeah, here we go. Okay, both calendars designate Labor Day, Veterans Day, New Year's Day, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day is holidays. And we're very excited because Veterans Day falls on a Friday, so, because when it's on a Thursday, then we have a lot of absences on Fridays. You probably don't want to hear that. But after many, many years of doing this calendar, that's the things that I, that's the wisdom that I have in these calendar days. Both calendars designate two-week intercession period, October and March. Both calendars designate a one-week Thanksgiving break. And we also get a two-week December break. Both calendars designate a district-wide summer closure in the first week of July. Independence Day falls within both those calendars. Yee-haw, change the, change it. Okay, thank you. Thank you for all of you who are helping me, you know? Sometimes we need some help. Anyway, in addition to the positive feedback that historically has been received about our calendar from our students, I already told you about that. I got ahead of myself because I was so excited to tell you about that we are a model. We are a model across the state, and it's a great, great accolade for us that districts want to come visit and see our calendar. Our goal is always to develop and implement a district calendar that maximizes best practices to include maximum opportunities for student instruction, staff development, and a robust and defined structure. Change the slide. There we go. So that's the calendar, and if you can't see it, for those of you not, if you can see, it's pretty much perfect. Just agree with it, okay? You have it bigger and you have it in your packet. And then this is the 2324 proposed calendar. And that concludes my presentation of the calendar. And thank you very much, and I would appreciate an endorsement of the next two years. Please.
Mr. Morales? Yeah, but question or comment here by Mr. Michael Nahara?
Ms. Forego, I just want to say I really do also applaud the scheduled open houses because in many instances, you know, having, there was a time where I had one daughter in high school, one in middle school, and one in elementary school, and I had to choose which one I was going to go to. The other thing that frequently happens with open houses is that they're done on the third Tuesday of the month.
Yes.
Which meant I either went to the board meeting or I went to one of the open houses. And I can see here, just by looking at the calendar, that you all have avoided that. So, well, that's a small group. You know, it, even some of our staff, you know, the teachers, et cetera, who want to come to the board meeting, you know, it helps and to make sure that our events don't conflict. So thank you for doing that. That was a great change. And then what is the impact of leap year? Because the 24th is a leap year.
So what it does is it, sometimes what it does is it shifts the calendar. It didn't this time, so it wasn't an impact. But sometimes it shifts the calendar. And we either get five weeks or three weeks before we start school, so it kind of, and everything shifts. So I don't want to deal with it anymore. So hopefully, and this year it didn't really, it fell beautifully. And I do want to say one more thing, because I know there are a lot of teachers and teacher associations, and they'll appreciate this. The two early release days that are on the calendar are for the fall open house. So we're going to give, the teachers are going to do the open house in the fall, and then they're going to get the December half day to make up for their time for that as a thank you. And then the same in the spring. We have a half day for the spring open house, so we'll make up the time for them.
Thank you.
I told you it was pretty near perfect. There you go. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Second. Any other questions? We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara. We have a second by Mr. Michael Nahara. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Borrego.
Thank you.
Item ten B, consider approval of a local policy.
Good evening, President Morales, Dr. Kimona, members of the board. On page two thirty-six is the policy, Local CPAB. It has to do with the mailroom and delivery of mail, and this year, we have included, we have been delivering cume folders through the mailroom for quite some time, and I've got a record of, we've delivered pre-COVID thirty, over thirty-five hundred, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, two thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine, and of course, this year, we've already delivered eighteen hundred and thirty-six. Also included in there is other items that we do deliver through the mailroom totaling over a hundred thousand pieces of mail. So we wanted to include this in the policy. We presented to the policy committee. Administration recommends approval.
Mr. Iinton? Second. Do you have any other questions for Mr. Iinton this time? We have a motion by Mr., Mr. Paul Guetta, and a second by Mr. Eddie Mena. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Iinton. And item eleven, executive session. The meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel regarding status of rate forty-one, group's intervention in Public Utility Commission of Texas, PUC proceedings, PUC docket number five-two-one-one, one-nine-five, SOAH docket number four-three-seven, twenty-one, twenty-six, zero-six. Application of El Paso Electric Company to change rates. Discussion regarding personnel action concerning Alderada High School Assistant Principal MH to discuss personnel and real estate matters to consider administrative recommendations for Director of Construction Manager, Principal Position at Ben Narber Elementary School, Coordinator of Emergency Management, Assistant Principal Positions at Pebble Hills High School, Keys Academy, Spec Rafael Hernando III Middle School, Chester E. Jordan Elementary School, James P. Butler Elementary School, Loma Verde Elementary School, and Desert Wind School under Texas Government, Code Section five-five-one-zero, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, and five-five-one-zero-seven-four. The time is seven-twelve.
Is eight twenty-five?
Item twelve, new business discussion and possible action to approve new employment term of contract for El Paso. Is that the... Are we on track for Mr. Blanco? Yes, okay. El Dorado High School Assistant Principal, M.H., presenter Steve Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Morales. Dr. Carmo, members of the board. I gave you an update on the request from the employee who's in an assistant principal position at El Dorado High School right now. Who was asked to be placed back onto a teaching contract. And that is a change in contract terms. It involves a change in salary. This individual has submitted a written request for that to be done. Indicated it is the employee's desire to do so. And she has met with the administration. Administration is willing to accept and make that accommodation for the employee. So we recommend that you authorize and approve the new employment contract terms for teacher now, M.H. And it will be a term contract to be issued to that individual.
Motion. Second. Motion was made by Mr. Paul Guerra and a second by Mr. Eddie Mena. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Blanco.
Thank you.
We have item twelve B, consider approval of administrative recommendations. Dr. Carmo?
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends Melissa Gardner to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends Melissa Gardner to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new coordinator of emergency management.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new coordinator of emergency management.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paul Guerra and a second by Ms. Cynthia Nahara. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. For the record, we have two no votes. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is item twelve B four, assistant principal Pebble Hills High School.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends Melissa Gardner to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new coordinator of emergency management.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next position is a coordinator for emergency management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new coordinator of emergency management.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paul Guerra and a second by Ms. Cynthia Nahara. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. For the record, we have two no votes. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is item twelve B four, assistant principal Pebble Hills High School.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends Melissa Gardner to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Eddie Mena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 12, New Business Discussion and Possible Action to Approve New Employment Term of Contract for El Paso. Is that the... Are we on track for Mr. Blanco? Yes, okay. El Dorado High School Assistant Principal, M.H., presenter Steve Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Morales. Dr. Carmo and members of the board. I gave you an update on the request from the employee who's in an assistant principal position at El Dorado High School right now, who was asked to be placed back onto a teaching contract, and that is a change in contract terms. It involves a change in salary, and this individual has submitted a written request for that to be done, indicated it is the employee's desire to do so, and she has met with the administration. Administration is willing to accept and make that accommodation for the employee. So we recommend that you authorize and approve the new employment contract terms for teacher now, M.H., and it will be a term contract to be issued to that individual.
Motion was made by Mr. Paul Guetta and a second by Mr. Eddie Mena. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Blanco.
Thank you.
We've got item 12B, Consider Approval of Administrative Recommendations. Dr. Carmo.
President Morales and members of the board, administration at this time recommends pulling the position of Director of Construction Manager.
Moved. We don't need a motion. No motion on that. We'll move on to the next item. Item two, Principal Ben Narberth Elementary School.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends Fernando Miranda to assume the role and responsibilities as the new principal of Ben Narberth Elementary School.
Motion to approve.
Second. We've got a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next position is the Coordinator for Emergency Management.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends James Nun to assume the role and responsibilities as the new coordinator of emergency management.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paul Guetta and a second by Ms. Cynthia Nahara. All those in favor?
Aye.
No. All those opposed?
Aye.
No. The motion carries. For the record, we have two no votes. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is item 12B4, Assistant Principal Pebble Hills High School.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends Melissa Gardner to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Eddie Mena. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the Assistant Principal at Keys Academy.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends Raquel Fraga to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal at Keys Academy.
Motion to approve. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Eddie Mena and a second by Mr. Paul Guetta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Next item, or C, 4C, Spec Rafael Hernando III Middle School.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends Lizette Rocha to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal at Chester Jordan Elementary School.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Specialist Rafael Hernando Middle School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Eddie Mena and a second by Ms. Cynthia Nahara. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Now we'll move over to 4D, Jester E. Jordan Elementary School Assistant Principal. Recommendation.
President Morales and members of the board, administration recommends Rosa Cerato to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal at Chester Jordan Elementary School.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara and a second by Mr. Eddie Mena. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is 4E, James P. Butler Elementary School.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends Paula Figueroa to assume the role and responsibilities as the assistant principal of James P. Butler Elementary School.
The move? Second. We have a motion by Mr. Paul Guetta and a second by Mr. Eddie Mena. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. And finally, our last item, I guess everybody would have to do them individually, 4F, Loma Verde Elementary School.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends pulling the position of assistant principal of Loma Verde Elementary School.
No action to be needed there. We're going to move on to the next item. Item 4G, Desert Wind School.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends pulling the recommendation for assistant principal at Desert Wind School.
No action will be taken on that as well. If there is no further business for this board, the meeting is adjourned at 8:32. Thank you.